Okay, everybody. Well, I'd like to open the Georgetown Planning Board Wednesday, July 23rd, 2014, meeting. First on the agenda, approval of meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 9th, 2014, as amended.
Amended. We amended them to the couple of spelling mistakes that you picked up. So appreciate that.
Okay.
Our second?
Hearing motion second, any discussion?
I have some questions.
Yep.
Um, I'm page seven. Number 301 where I'm talking about, we usually do everything outside and I am surprised with the ZBA written decision.
What line am I on? Sorry. 301?
Page 7 of 15.
It wasn't a completed sentence, so I completed it. It was dailies.
Decision has not been appealed. That's a good one. No, we usually do everything outside. Not surprised that. What was that, Tilly?
With the ZBA written decision. I just wanted to add.
I remember you talking about that.
Clarify it.
Yeah.
Clarify it.
Bob, you okay with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Number 10, page 10 on 446. Just add hearing after zoning board of appeals hearing.
What line, please?
446.
Page 10 of 15, line 446, add hearing after appeals. You guys all okay with that?
Sure.
Sure.
Well, page 12, 500.
Okay.
Add is the reason you are here. They gave you a special permit for nonconforming is the reason you are here. I think the applicant was questioning why they were here. And I think that's, oh, wait a minute. Um, oh, page 15 of 15, 628. I have been on the zoning board of appeals.
What number, Tilly? I'm sorry.
628.
Six twenty.
I have been on the zoning board of appeals and have been a witness in court cases and they question minutes quite a lot. Just add those few words. That was it. That's it.
Could you say that again for me?
I do remember you saying that.
And have been.
On the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
And have been a witness in court cases. And they question minutes quite a lot.
Find my name. Okay. You guys all set now?
I wasn't here for all of it.
All right. All set. Tim's here on time, so it's good enough. All right. So hearing no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. All right. We have four ayes, one abstain. Howard for the minutes. Correspondents? I'm just going to do that quickly.
The first two are just comments received from abutting towns, notices of special permit hearings. Third item, Camelot Realty Trust request for release of funds we can bring up under the agenda item of planning office.
Okay. Vouchers.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Make a motion to approve the vouchers in a total of $930.
Second?
Do I hear any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. unanimous. Okay, vouchers. Moving on to the A and R Form A plan. Next on the agenda. Howard, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to it.
Just note that per the request of the board, I requested that the two safety departments, the public safety departments, the police and the fire, to go out and look at the subject property. And they both wrote correspondence back that I had sent on to the board in the packet.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is that I'd like to acknowledge the fire chief's memo. And if the board agreed to just have Howard draft a memo that forwards this to the attention of the selectmen and the Department of Public Works, just so that they're aware of the fire chief's concerns that he's listed here. Not to go anywhere with that, but just so that everybody has the information and to respect his opinion. So I don't know what you guys think.
The miles that are here have been amended to add that note to the board that was requested.
So that's ready to sign.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, in that case to approve the A and R, excuse me, to endorse the A and R in two sheets entitled TacMap 12, Lot 25, property Allen Olson, 21 Pillsbury Street, County of Essex, Georgetown, Mass. With a rev date of 7/16/14. That's my motion. Stick it to it.
There's been a motion. Wait a second. Motion second. Any discussion?
Do we add the zoning statement?
That zoning statement was added. I saw it. You got a copy of that there.
Very good.
There it is. So hearing no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. unanimous. So we can sign that when we take a break, I think. So.
We're moving along fairly quickly.
Because we're melting.
Right.
Yeah, really. That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
Let's maintain the momentum.
Yeah.
The applicant for the first public hearing is here, but I know that the applicant for the second public hearing are in a meeting downstairs and they're expecting to be up here at about eight. So.
Okay. Well.
First come, first served.
Why don't we, yeah, let's go to 1719, public hearing. Good evening.
All the correspondence since the last meeting has been forwarded on to the board. And I have on the overhead the revised plans as well. At the last meeting, it was requested of a couple pieces of document we provided. They have. And I'm here to discuss those. Just make sure that the vouchers.
So this is different than what we have in the packet?
No.
No. What you have in the packet is what's going to be discussed. We haven't received any additional information since the packet. But everything that was in the packet is what was requested of the board.
Well, I have some things I didn't realize you were soliciting. I have some things that we never even hit upon that were in the site of people.
Was that one or two? That should have been two, no?
Three.
Oh.
Yeah, Howard has everything scanned and then he gets to.
Okay. There you go.
Good evening. Jill Mann here on behalf of Another Spot Inc., which will be doing business as thus spot, a new restaurant located at 19 West Main Street. I'm here with me this evening is Mark McDonough, who is the principal of Another Spot. Also with me this evening is Richard Griffin, who was here the last time presenting to this board. I apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting. I, we didn't think that I was going to end up needing to be here, but we thought that maybe for this meeting it was best if I attend. What we had done was we essentially went through all of your comments and responded to them. And I just, and I also provided a narrative that I believe Howard forwarded to this board. And essentially what the narrative says is, you know, we've delivered almost everything the board has asked us to deliver. Our request is pretty, if you will, limited and defined. It is a modification to an existing facade. We are not changing any use requirements. We are not changing any layouts. We are not changing any drainage, any parking, any burden, nothing. The only thing that we would be doing, if you will, that kind of encroached was actually a reduction of an encroachment, and that was the awning that was reduced by about, what, four inches, six inches? And that had been authorized, if you will, by the board of selectmen because that awning does presently overhang into the town's way. And we would be adjusting it to pull it back. So.
Also higher.
Yes, and it is higher, located higher. So a couple of the things that the board had asked us to do, we did do. We provided an updated site plan despite the fact nothing was changed with it. We actually provided you with additional color. Oh, yeah, there you go. So what we had done was just do an updated plan. We had a surveyor go out and plot everything and show the exact dimensions of the existing building as it sits. In addition to that, what we did do is just add some things to the, Howard, okay, it's going so fast, add some things to the actual elevations just to show you that there was a reduction in the actual burden of that awning. In addition, we did provide for you a photographic depiction of what the change in the facade will be. And we put them side by side essentially so that you could see the quality of the, if you will, the neighborhood. I mean, the building is very dark in its present condition. It is very, if you will.
Hookered over.
Yeah. I mean, uninviting. You just, you don't notice it even because of the color scheme. What we've done is proposed to create a more visual appealing and brighter look. And that's what you see. And again, all we're doing is changing the actual facade and the front facing wall. So we're increasing a parapet and that's how we get the height of the building. We're not increasing, as I said, the seats. We're maintaining the 87-seat capacity and therefore retaining the nonconforming legally existing aspect of the property. If I may, there are some issues being raised by abutting property orders. Number one, the woman who owns the pizza place saying that she was fearful that the actual increase to the height would block vision. The reason why we gave you the picture is to show you. It doesn't block anything. You know, if, I suppose if you were up above, yeah, it would. But when you're walking on the street, it just doesn't have an impact because of how this building is actually located on the end of a triangle, if you will. And you can see that. I mean, it's for the board to look at, and that's why we did it.
Could I just interject about the drawing? It is a fish eye perspective. It's actually a flat plane that you would see in elevation. And so there's no projection of the spot, of course, past where the pizza place is. And in fact, the pedestrian will have a better view of the pizza place overhang because our overhang's out of the way.
And it's higher up.
Yeah.
Why did you do that kind of a picture?
What I'd like to do is just let them go ahead and finish and then we'll do the questions.
Some of the other comments that were raised with regard to the existing alleyway, that's a legally existing right that's been, you know, that is possessed by the owner of this property. It is not our right. It is his right. And that alleyway exists between 15 and 19. And I know that there was some comment that it should be fenced. It should be this. It should be that. But I think that probably your fire chief wouldn't exactly like that because it's an access to the back of the property. For, secondly, the owner of the property wouldn't be that happy because it's a legally possessed right to actually go to the back. And that's how they access that parking area and the rest of their property. And I think that was important to him when he acquired the property. In addition to that, there was a request that we demonstrate that we haven't changed the lighting or made the lighting shine off the property. We haven't changed the lighting at all. The only place we actually added some was to that alleyway to make the alleyway safer. So while we do project off our site, we project onto a legally controlled site, which we're entitled to actually maintain for safe purposes. So we did do that, and we did provide you with lighting specifications. In addition, it's my understanding that some of the local business people had raised some complaints relative to parking. I mean, obviously, this is a problem for everybody. But again, it's a legally existing use. The parking is what the parking is. We can't change it. We can't add it. We don't have any ability. It is truly an existing condition that has existed for a long time and that burdens the entire community in this particular area. But what we did do, and we even discussed it with Mr. Snyder to make sure, you know, are we doing the right thing? We showed a survey to show you what is the public ability and how much parking is available. There was a question, what about putting a handicap space behind the building? Does it, there's no access. It's not suitable access because back there, it's not, it's not even. It's an existing layout. It's seven spaces. It would be far better for the entire community if the town put it right in front of the building. We're not trying to retain spaces. Put a handicap space because we can't put one back there because it doesn't provide, it does not provide right proper access, number one. Number two, it's not legally required because there's seven parking spaces that don't provide. And you have to go up through the alleyway, around and through because there's no public access to the back. So the best place to put it would be to take one of the existing spaces and put it right in front and take one of those handicaps, one of those spaces, make it handicapped so that everybody could partake in it. I know what you're saying, Mr. Tilly, but it's just not the proper place to put it. Well, I can tell by the look on your face. So that's where the parking sits presently. As far as signage, we did show you the signs. We showed you the colors. We showed what the depiction, as you can see on the buildings. And I read the zoning decision as to how they considered the two plaques on the side to be more of an architectural feature. And then the plaque in the middle, I gave you the square footage, and that is less than 15 percent because I think 15 percent of the area was like 140 feet. And that sign is 65 square feet. Trying to think of the other aspects of the issues. I think that was really the bulk of what the questions were. There was some issue that the rear of the, the rear and the construction refuse was actually migrating onto the abutting property. But in fact, it isn't. The refuse is being kept on site. And then there was some allegation that during construction, we had created some damage. If we did, we will fix it. But our belief is that it probably was done during plowing and that the previous user had done so. But trust me, if it was our mistake, I mean, Mr. McDonough is here. We're going to fix it. We're not going to, you know, allow our people to damage somebody else's property and not rectify that. At this point, I don't know if you have questions for us or.
Okay. Could be all right, Tim? Start with you and we'll just go right around.
Sure. One of the concerns that was brought up was as people walk around the side of the building, presumably, was that through the alley?
They can, yeah.
Would it be, it poses somewhat, you would say, a preexisting danger. But what about putting like a mirror up, like they put up at intersections, blind intersections?
One's being shot on the blind.
Oh, okay. You already have one there?
Well, we did get one to put up and right at the corner, an elliptical mirror so you could see traffic coming out as you're entering.
Okay.
And we put two bollards, a bollard on either side of the side exitway. So that would protect, give a warning to traffic. And we're proposing a sign at each end of the driveway that says caution, two-way traffic and pedestrians.
Okay. And the only other comment that was, somebody had sent a notice of Georgetown Insurance was that people park there and throw bottles and break them in the yard.
First, there's nobody leaving this, there will be nobody leaving our restaurant with a bottle. It's a violation of our license and we can lose it. And we heavily monitor that. I'll be honest with you, nine times out of 10 when people say that, it's one of, it's some kids. It is. It's very infrequently a restaurant.
Kids play up on that big rock behind.
Yeah. I mean, and if somebody parks in their, in their parking lot, by all means, if they're not authorized, tow them. We will put up signs in our restaurants saying, you know, do not park in unauthorized spaces. If you do, you will be subject to towing and it's at your own risk. We are not attempting to allow our customers to go anywhere where they're not supposed to go.
On the other hand, you can't stop them.
We cannot. But we're not, we are not going to encourage it. And we will post in our building, you cannot park in unauthorized spaces. Absolutely, we will do that. And as far as the control, I have been to every single one of Mr. McDonough's restaurants and I have never seen anybody leave a restaurant. Plus, we have, at the fronts of all of our restaurants, we have, what is it called? Hostess station. We have bartender. People don't leave the building with drinks. And if they do, we go after them to bring them back because we can lose our license.
The woman at the Pizza Factory had said that people were parking in, I don't know if it's, must be construction vehicles at this point because who else would be there relative to your restaurant? And she was concerned that is there like a way you can, and your sign that you're going to put, I guess, inside the building about parking and not parking in places that you shouldn't park?
If she had come next door and talked to us, we can assure you that nobody would ever have parked in her space or blocked her again. The first time we heard about it was that night. Of course, if somebody is bothering her, all she needs to do is talk to the manager. That's it. And it will stop.
And then it becomes, you know, enforcement on the police department's part too.
Oh, absolutely. But we want to, we want to handle it. We don't want to have to get the police involved. If we, if it's our people doing something that is affecting a neighbor, a neighboring property owner, we will try to resolve it. If it's a, if it's a patron and we can't control the patron, then yeah, then the police would have to be involved. But if there's construction vehicles or any of our staff or any people who are doing construction that are doing something that is harming an abutting property owner, we will handle it immediately.
Well, that's all, the only concern I have is sort of following up on the comments made last time. Seems like you've already addressed that.
One of the themes really has been existing use. And I totally respect that this has been a restaurant for longer than I've been in town since 1982.
Yes.
So, and I'm a newcomer to town, so, you know.
Oh, totally.
Yeah.
A newbie.
A newbie. Yeah.
That's what I moved to.
Eighty-two. Ah. So I do, I do totally respect that. I do have a question about that parking lot because the parking lot is a mess. And it's always a mess. And it looks like a fence is falling over and it, it could use some improvement. Now, I don't know, I don't want to get in, personally, I'm not an engineer. I don't want to get into the details of what you might do. But something to solidify that, that parking lot? Do you know the, do you know the lot?
I do.
Gravel and park paved?
It's all bituminous.
Okay.
Ninety-nine percent. The right of way is all gravel.
Oh, that's what it is. That's what the issue. That's the handicap issue. I thought it was gravel.
Which is, which, just to clarify, you're talking about the parking lot that's all paved?
I've been dying.
Oh, my gosh.
Where's my laser beam?
Where are the lasers?
This is a 21st century operation here.
This is new, the laser beam.
Yeah.
Without air conditioning.
Well, you haven't been using them.
Seventeenth century.
Suits the room up too much. Yeah.
It did hit 90 here. I told you I was going to tell you.
I'm hitting the road as soon as this.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to go fast.
So this is crushed stone. This ruts up and is a mess. In the wintertime, in the spring, every year. Every year.
On the right of way you're talking about?
On the right of way, up here. And there are ruts that form again every year. It's a mess. It can't help the parking situation. It can't help your customers. And I, again, I don't have a suggestion, but this whole thing needs to be improved.
When you say that parking lot needs to be improved, are you talking about the fence?
We don't.
The fence is here. I don't know who owns the fence, but.
We don't own it. That's the problem.
I understand. So you're talking about the fence. Are you talking about the paving?
I'm talking about the paving.
Yeah.
The surface. Yes.
And is there anything else there that you were talking about, you were thinking about?
Not really, no.
Okay. Okay. So, okay, we've got that. Did you have any?
That's it.
Yeah?
That's it.
Okay. All right. What I mean by that, we've got that, is that I think, I want to talk a little bit about that with them. But what I want to do is go around with everybody first and try to keep it.
Mr. Harry? I have some concerns about the abutter that said that he was going to be here, but I don't see him. I don't know what happened.
The insurance.
Sent a letter in. Yeah. Sounds like you're going to try to address those with some signage in the restaurant.
Oh, we will put signage up.
I suspect that's as good as it's going to get. I, I have, again, the whole thing, the crux of this is the parking. And I, I have a little bit of a problem with the parking because as I see it, and a hammerhead here, but as I see it, the way the special permit required you to have a stockade fence added essentially eliminated.
The stockade fence?
Around enclosure, around the dumpster. Wasn't that part of the stock?
Here, Harry, use the laser beam.
Oh, thank you.
Talking about around the dumpster.
Just a little bit. How do I use it?
Oh, my goodness. This is, oh. Is it working? I'm hitting myself. Maybe you could show it. Oh, there it is. A little red button. Oh, wow. Oh, with the safety glasses.
Twenty-first century.
One spot, two spots, three, four, five, six. This would be your seventh spot, but how do you get into it and out of it without hitting the fence? And I could have looked beyond that fact that you're actually down one spot now due to that if you had HP parking, which would have meant you would have probably had to widen this spot or one of these others. I could have looked beyond that. At this point, I can't.
All you need is what, 12? How much, how big a path do you have?
You need for a car to pull out of there, you need, you need a solid, I'm going to say 12 feet.
12 feet. Yes.
But, but that's, that's if you have, the guy who's going to have the problem is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven. And he's got a hammerhead. So if you have 12 feet, it's a tight fit, but it's, it's doable.
Yeah, we can, we can.
I didn't want to show that.
Right. We could even do this to, what is that called?
Angle parking.
Angle the last.
Settle, that'll ripple down.
Yeah, but we have that last space. Is it one, two, three, four, five, six, seven? That last one isn't a space. Yeah. So that last one isn't counted. So we have room to angle them. So that you would have the 12 feet. And then what we can do is spin the dumpster.
Well, the.
So we can do it. It's not a problem.
So you'd have to show something, how you deal with that.
And what's it, nine by 20 foot for a parking space?
Nine by 18.
Nine by 18? Oh, that was one.
Or an angled spot?
Oh, it's nine by.
How you, how you measure it.
Whatever the ordinance is.
I think also we'd probably have those spaces as an employee space which would park earlier. And, and that would be the space that wouldn't require immediate exit.
If, if you were going to do that, then you'd want to sign it. And so however you are going to show it on the drawing, then if you can put a sign, the employee parking only, then you.
I suppose, let me, so if we do the employee parking only, we can leave them in that structure. So then, you know what? Let's just do that employee parking only for that one space and put a sign up.
They'll all be fighting over that.
Because that way the plan is existing and you don't have to re, re, you know, reform at it. So we'll definitely indicate that seventh space as being employee only. I mean, for the most part, the staff will probably take up a couple of those parking spaces.
So that's up to you guys.
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll just put a sign on the last space.
Just, just so we're clear, the HP parking is definitely off the table. You're not willing to do that. And.
It's not that we're not willing. It just, it won't work. You can't, the right of way, while we have the right to use it, is gravel. It's not an appropriate location for HP. I mean, if anything, the best location, what we, if I'm a handicap person, I want you to put it right out in front. And by all means, you should. And that's where it should be, is right in front of that door.
I, I think.
It takes away a public parking space from us. We don't mind that.
With all due respect, I think if you're a handicap person, you make reasonable accommodation.
I agree.
And that.
I agree.
That means that you wouldn't have to park in, in the insurance parking lot.
No, no, right.
And work your way across the street.
I agree. Right there is existing public parking spaces, right there, right in front of the building.
But this is a public entity for profit that's asking to have this permit approved.
We're not asking for a permit to be approved. We're asking for the site plan to be endorsed. There's no permit for.
Oh, I thought this was a site plan approval. I'm sorry.
It is site plan approval. It is.
Oh, right.
We are. Well, okay, I thought you meant permit, special, I'm thinking you're talking special permit.
No, you already granted that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So we are, but we're not, again, I understand. And we would love to be able to provide something. That's not a good location. Even if I tell you I'm going to put it there, nobody's going to park there. It's, I mean, even, even tonight, if Mark says, you know what, Jill, just make it a handicap space. Quite honestly, it's kind of unfortunate because that's where it should be in front. And we're saying, we'll petition the selectmen even to do it, which by the way, I'm pretty confident they would because that makes sense because it benefits the whole street because there's no, no handicap parking anywhere.
Are you willing to? Are you willing to wait for your occupancy permit until it's created?
No, but there's no need to do that.
Okay.
Well, we can do it immediately. In my opinion, I believe it should be done immediately by just adding it. And that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Well, just to conclude that comment, the existing gravel tent right of way, the private way, do you have any rights to doing anything with that?
No, we don't, no. I mean, does the owner of the building? I, I don't know. We have the right to use it and we've been given that. We don't have the right to do anything to it.
Who owns that?
The woman who owns map eleven eight, yeah. I can't recall her name, I'm sorry.
The reason I'm asking that question, Harry, is that, um, they, they don't have the ability, even if they wanted, to just wave a wand and show a handicap space out in front in the, uh, in this row, out here.
Oh, don't, don't, don't get me wrong. I'm not talking about showing HP.
Yeah, but so showing.
The parking area that they have full control over is where I would look for it.
And what I'm, what I'm just saying is that, uh, they, let's say they were to turn one of these into a handicap space and then the van unloading spot. What you're going to be doing is you're going to want to create a safe pathway here for a walkway, handicap access way, um, if you were going to do that. But in order to do that, you need to, this all is their property. They don't have the control over that. They can't do that on someone else's property.
They don't even use it, the map eleven A.
Well, what I'm saying is they, they can't propose something on that.
Anyone can walk from back there in their car down there and make it around.
Yes.
Then a, a wheelchair can.
Not necessarily, Harry.
On gravel.
Oh, I've been there.
This is.
If I hadn't been out there myself, and I just like to point out on the plan one thing, if I may.
Yeah.
Should, there, there should be a, um, the balliards shown here, eject, uh, attached to this building because the, uh, the gas line is there, the gas meter. And, uh, again, uh, we, we can, we can agree to disagree.
Well, I, I think, I think what I, I think, I think what I'm hearing, we'll, we'll. So, we'll, we'll come back. I, I think, I think, I don't think it is quite as distinct possibility as you're thinking. But we'll come back to that. Was there anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was it.
All right. Tilly?
While we're, we were talking about the parking, uh, you did this circle.
Yes.
Um, I didn't see any count on your employees that you're going to have there. Where are they going to park?
Say it again. Did I make a comment? The way the zoning appeared to be written to me in terms of the total number of parking spaces required was simply based on the number of seats in the restaurant. And there was a requirement for one space per four seats. And so, I assumed that included, um, the total. It, it didn't say there should be a, a separate addition for employees on top of the number of seats in the restaurant. So, we came up with twenty-two seats. That was my reading of the zoning ordinance.
Well, eighty-seven seats and twenty-two spaces.
Yes.
Right, yeah. So, that would be eighty-eight divided by four, which is twenty-two.
And that takes into account that.
And that should count the employees into that equation.
That's correct.
Because there, also there was a, um, a note there from, I think Jill, you wrote this. Your liquor license has eighty-seven seats? I never included that as an employee seat.
No, the way that, the, the.
I think that's separate. I think that's, that's adding on to your eighty-seven.
I would, I would, I would, I would say that the way the ordinance is written, when they calculate parking for, let's say, a restaurant, it's built into their formula. The, the amount of employee parking, how they calculate and come up with the twenty-two. So, the employee parking is included in the eighty-seven total.
It's, it's, um.
I didn't see that in our, in our.
It's sort of irrelevant because we're being asked to waive if they're only providing, well, seven or six.
They want us to waive the parking?
Oh, yeah. That's, that's why we're here.
I understand that, but are these seven spots that you're talking about in the back, are they going to be for employees?
Not exclusively, no. No?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
That, that's where they were going to park.
It's exactly, I mean, honestly, it's where they always parked before. They park, it's a combination of parking in this parking lot. It's a combination of parking on the street. Some of them are actually locals and had walked before. So, it's, it's a big combination of all those things. I, I can't tell you specifically where they'll park, but it'll be, it'll be a mix.
It'll continue to park as an existing non-conforming use.
Yeah.
I mean, the way the parking is set up.
And that's the reason why, this is the first site approval I think the town has ever had for any of those buildings.
Really?
It's fought, long as I've been here in the seventies.
Well, like in nineteen eighty-two, did you even have site plan approval?
We had it, but it never was done. Review we had. We had review for, I don't know, for how many years, but.
Only review.
This is, that's why we're being, you know, so careful to set the pattern for what comes on in the future.
Yeah.
The other thing that we, you didn't mention at all was, was noise. What's your hours going to be? What kind of, are you going to have entertainment?
We do, we do. We have entertainment under the liquor license and we got our, we got our, um, license from the, the, um, Board of Selectmen. Um, we, we open from, the, the town had endorsed the brunch bylaw so that you can open early on Sunday. Remember, we had to come back for that? So, we, um, can, you, we can open at ten on Sunday, but what do we, what do we end up doing? We do eleven till twelve.
We ask for the maximum. We do what the people want to do.
Typically, what we're open from is eleven to twelve. Um, under your bylaw, the selectmen said they didn't want a hamstring. They said, we'll give you, you know, uh, the whole, the whole gambit and when you're open, you're open. But usually, it's eleven till twelve. And then even on, you know, Mondays, Tues, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, it's earlier in the winter than it is in the summer. I mean, the hours will flex according to whatever the town's demand is for the most part. And with regard to noise, we, we only are allowed to have, of course, we can't have bands. So, it's like acoustical stuff. So, you come in, you might sit down and there'll be like three, three guys sometimes playing, um, you know, a piano and a guitar and it's quiet music. It never, we're never allowed to migrate outdoor, outside of the walls. We don't leave doors open. There's, I don't think we've ever received a noise complaint. Uh, just, so we must, we must retain inside and we do that.
If, if you were to pursue a license to allow for more than just an acoustical play, I mean, is there a threshold of having to get into at the state review level because you have a liquor license and entertainment?
No, there is no additional review. However, there's no place to put it. We only have eighty-seven seats.
I can tell you economically speaking.
It doesn't work.
Anything over three is completely unecon- uneconomical in that size restaurant to do it. There's just not enough people to pay for a band bigger than three people. You won't see it.
But we don't have the right to do that either.
It'd get in the way of the dartboard too.
Is there a dartboard in there? Was there before?
Oh, there has been. I mean.
There isn't any one.
I'm just, I'm just.
You know what else I suggested? If you're, if you're really going to be successful and you're going to pack it in with eighty-seven seats, I was considering valet parking. We do have a park and ride. If you, we had some kind of a setup like that, if you got really busy like that, would that be something that you could handle?
Well, I'll tell you, I was asking Jill ahead of time. If I did valet parking, would you consider me being able to have a little?
A drop off?
Outdoor dining in the, in the back?
Outdoor dining in the back?
Where, in the back with the seven.
That would require a site plan approval, but we.
Yeah.
It, not now. We're not looking for it now. This is just telling you what.
I'll trade you park place and boardwalk.
Interesting idea, but perhaps not now.
Not now. We need to get ourselves established first.
But if it does become that successful, that's what I'd like to do, is I'd like to trade you park place and boardwalk.
Right.
So, what Mark does a lot, I mean, I know you don't know him yet, but you will. And, um, he really does work with the town. So, if the business becomes, um, demanding and he needs to provide more spaces, he'll, he'll, he'll find a solution. Um, because it, his business is dependent upon it, his success of it. If he can't, if he doesn't have parking and he can't make his restaurant full and he can't service people, he's not going to be successful. So, he makes every attempt to do that.
You keep saying restaurant. How popular is the bar?
Well, bars are very popular these days.
As popular as possible.
After the, after the big, uh, the grand recession, bars across America and all my restaurants went up, which is why you see larger bars. And the whole, uh, idea that I grew up with, which is you go to the bar and then you move to the quiet dining room.
It doesn't happen.
It's out. People like to be near the energy of a bar. So, the bars are now front and center in the modern design of a restaurant.
But you eat at the bar. I mean, it's, you've, you've ever been to those restaurants anywhere else? No?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's very similar.
So, the, actually, and people eat at the bar, so the distinction, restaurant bar is a non-discrimination.
And that's why I keep saying it because to me, it's one in the same.
Yeah.
It, I'm sorry.
I couldn't understand this. I had a question, Mark, on your phrase here.
Sure.
You wrote something, um, in, uh, what page? Oh, the pages aren't numbered. Let me see.
The second page of page parking.
Two, three, four. The fourth page I have a question about. On the last paragraph.
I apologize. Which document is mine?
Lighting analysis?
Oh, analysis. It's on this one. It's this. After this page, Mark? Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have something here, um, well, your whole sentence is a lighting analysis of those fixtures with fruit, fruit metric performances attached. Note that the light intensity at sidewalk level is below the zoning code requirement maximum of twenty-five lumens.
Okay, you want?
And the fixtures are able to be directed to, to avoid trespassing on this main street. Can you explain that?
Of course. So, under the zoning bylaw, we're not, we're required to provide a certain amount of light to provide safe walking, basically, safe access. Um, but under your bylaw, we're not allowed to have the light go into another person's property. So, you have to maintain it within the four corners of your property. So, what this is saying is, um, the, the light is below the zoning code maximum. So, we don't have, you know, a spotlight that's going to be offensive. It's just enough light to provide for safety. And that the fixtures, we can actually direct, put kind of, you ever see those things where you have like the screens or the directions so that you can block light, direct light, reflect light so that it never migrates off our property? So, it's always within the property and within what the requirements are for the bylaw.
You wouldn't see it from the street driving?
They won't, exactly. So, it's not going to be, you know, like a blinding thing for you. So, you're not going to have issues when you drive or otherwise impact safety, which is the big deal with lights. Because if you're driving by and you have a spotlight in your face, it's just like having somebody with a high beam on. That's what your bylaw was intending to do and that's what we described as being, as our being compliant with it.
So, the diagram that you, that it looked to me like that was going to be very strong lighting.
Which, I apologize.
One of the diagrams that you had.
Like that?
The square wouldn't like, it was square.
No, that's a, that's a manufacturer's catalog photometric. It's a, it's a standalone document. It, um, I had questions about how they presented the information, so you can't. That's, that, what you're looking at there, Tilly, is a, is a snapshot of the fixture by itself, irrelevant of anything. It's just a, it's a, it's a technical drawing period.
Oh, okay.
But what it did do was it, it, it did say how much, how many lumens would fall on the sidewalk if the light were given height. And so, we took that fifteen-foot height and found that we're somewhere around eighteen lumens down on the sidewalk, I believe. And so, um, and the other thing that, that does happen there is, is we have a pretty deep sidewalk, actually. So, so we have, um, you know, I, I can't remember. It varies between ten and sixteen feet over the length of it.
I think it was, somebody actually asked a question about the safe access around.
And so, um, uh, the, the light will fall well within that area.
That was all mine. Okay. Let's see. These aren't in any order of importance, but, um, on your dumpster, now I know this is something that came from the ZBA, but you have a note, existing dumpster on bituminous concrete pad. There is really no such thing as a bituminous concrete pad. I don't know. Did they mean a, did they mean a, a concrete pad?
Well.
I hope they did.
Right now, as a matter of fact, we, we, we probably should cross out the word bituminous because we have a, a, there is bituminous concrete, but not a bituminous concrete pad because bituminous concrete is just another name for paving.
Correct.
And, uh, so, uh, the idea was that it would, would be on a bituminous surface as opposed to gravel surface. But, uh, we do have a, a proposal to put a concrete, a regular concrete pad underneath the dumpster.
That, and that's what I was going to recommend and it would have a thick, and it would have a thickened edge for it, which will hold up as they pick it up and out.
Right, exactly.
So, um.
That's what we're planning to do.
So, you, you could fix, you could fix the drawing to, to reflect that. Okay. The, um.
Yep, I just did.
You have, um, two bollards at the, um, side entrance, side exit. Four inch, um, this is just a recommendation. Up to you. I'd go six inches. Four inches isn't going to last a pill of beans.
I agree with you. At least five, but maybe six is.
So, just go to six?
Six is, yeah, six is a standard. And this is just a recommendation.
Well, we don't, I mean, listen, it's a good recommendation.
Across the alley, we were eights.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Probably. The, um, on the clearance issue of walking on the sidewalk, and I know you guys took a close look at that. You have five foot, two inches to that planter. So, that tree's gone, but the survey shows the tree's still there.
We're putting another one in.
You are?
Yes.
Okay. If you're going to put another one in, here's what I would like to throw out.
Yeah, of course.
It's just an idea. Right now, that plant pit is, um, five-two from the, your bench. When you add another foot for your knees and then, because your bench is.
I understand now. I didn't.
And then, and then you add another foot for, if you're walking by somebody, you don't want to be hitting their knees. So, you take away another two feet from that five-two. So, you have a three-foot-two zone. That's really not enough room for two people to walk by. So, on that planter, if you were to get rid of that planter and relocate it, which means you jackhammer out a square and be happy to work through Howard to assist with, there's no magic to street tree planting. It's simply an issue of the amount of soil that they have to grow in. So, there are a number of ways to do it to get a lot of soil and it's not just a four-by-four pit. But on the surface, it looks like a four-by-four pit.
Go underneath, right, excavate them?
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of ways to do it and be happy to work through Howard to help you guys with that. But if, if you could do that, then I think you can move it more towards the sidewalk. The type of tree you pick, you want to pick something that's upright branching so that people don't hit it and cars don't hit it and whatnot. I can, we can help you with that. And then you'll have plenty of clearance between the bench and the tree. That's more money on your end than just putting another tree in right there. So, something to think about.
Can I think about that over?
Please think about it. Please. I would just add that if, if, and this isn't, I'm not holding you hostage. There's not enough room to keep that pit there and that one particular bench. I think you'd need to get rid of that one bench if that pit stays there.
Okay.
So. Trick. Up to you. So, think about that.
Well, can I ask you a question?
Question.
Are, are we essentially giving license to the benches via this process?
Not necessarily right now. I wasn't even thinking of that, but, um.
It seems to be shown on the plan and I, I think that's what we need.
We can bring, we can bring, you can bring that question up if, if you don't, if you've got an issue with the benches, um.
I'm just wondering the, the legality of it. I mean, I, I don't know if we can. In the same way, the oning.
Yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Over the town land, I mean.
Yeah, who's got the, who's got the authority for that?
May I know the selectman saw them and knew about them? They didn't mention them? I don't, I don't, did you mention them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's probably, it's probably not a bad idea for us to find out who's got the jurisdiction on the benches on a public street.
Uh, I believe it's the board of selectmen.
Okay. So, if that's true, then, then we'd, we'd wanna communicate with them.
Right, right. And, and it can, it can be written into a decision where the applicant needs to acquire.
Acquire that. Yep.
And if I may, we're gonna remove those two benches on this side, this even in front of the tree, because Mark doesn't want it um, at all. He's like, I don't even want either bunch. I'd rather just keep the two benches on the other side.
Okay.
I'm planning on putting a community bulletin board next to that window. And so if there's a bench in front of it, you can't.
Can't see it. Okay. Um, okay, so you can adjust the drawings to reflect that.
Okay.
You have a sign on this uh, ten-foot right-of-way as you're exiting, which says, sign says caution to traffic and pedestrians. So that sign works great for the people coming out. I'm thinking of people who are walking on the sidewalk. And um, many times I've seen a small sign that is also attached to the building, which says, you know, traffic or.
Drive-by way or something.
You know, heads up. Um, so, it's not a big sign. It's just, and it can be tastefully done to be consistent with the architecture.
We'll do it, right?
Doesn't have to be a. So that was just a safety item there.
Oh, that idea. That would be flush to the wall, basically, mounted on the wall.
Um, I think it would need to be perpendicular to the wall for it to be read by somebody walking down the sidewalk.
Can it be right near that mirrored sign?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking if it were on the corner. As, oh, I see. If, if you're walking from the restaurant towards the right-of-way, you're thinking.
No, I thought you're coming.
I just, anybody, anybody just walking along the sidewalk in any direction, um, they'd need to see a sign that's perpendicular to them. So, it would be. It would be like the same sign you've got now for the ten-foot right-of-way, but on the, just right around the corner.
I see.
It will be sticking out over their heads.
It would have to be high enough so that you wouldn't walk under it. Yep.
You know, you could do is, under the awning, you could hang like a little sign like that. You know what I mean? So that you, cause you don't want anybody to hurt themselves, cause I don't know about you, but sometimes I don't pay attention.
Right, you could walk right into the sign.
So I could, I could smack right into it. But if I put it up under the awning, so if you turn, you know what? If you turn to the page, um, where's the side view, Howard? Here it is. If you, if you go onto the side view, you can see the awning. We could hang something below the awning, cause otherwise it will be.
It's eight foot ten.
There wasn't many pictures of the awning. What did you say?
You don't, you don't want, well, let's, I just wanna stay right where we are. I, I would say, take a look at it, and if you can come up with something that you think works, it will help. If you don't think it will work, then just report back to that. Okay? It's not, let's not design it right now.
Yeah, let's not design it, but let's not eliminate the idea that you could mark the sidewalk so that people would be aware of the fact that vehicles might be going in and out.
You'd love that, wouldn't you? Laser light it. He's gonna, he's gonna laser light it, do him like this.
The um, the, the draw, the waiver requests, um, your number three note, it, it's for me confusing. Maybe, maybe, and everyone else has no problem with it, but it says, it's about the architect's stamp.
Oh, we, we ended up giving you the, the engineer survey and.
Yeah, so, so are you gonna just delete that note or?
Well, it's just that we're putting in new things that are not on the survey.
Yep.
And that's essentially what I'm certifying. For example, the dumpster.
Okay, so, that's fine, but what, it, it's just not clear the way the note's written now. Cause it says architect's stamp. Because existing stamped engineered site plan submitted with the drawing package certifies. What I would ask is that where you say the existing stamped engineered site plan, I would then call out that plan.
Okay.
Call, just so that it references, you know, titled, plan titled, existing conditions by your surveyor. And then that clarifies that, so there's no mistake in that, submitted with the drawings, certifies the footprint, the building, its setbacks, and property lines. But it looks like you're doing the trees and light poles. You're certifying to the trees and light poles.
No.
No? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so then that would stay just the way that is. That's all set. Remaining items of information requested. If you could indicate some of, you know, but not including all, something like, you know, remaining items such as, uh, I don't know what you are.
Dumpster, benches.
Yeah. Ju- just, just to indicate what kind of information you're talking about, so that when someone reads this note, they can reference the area that you're talking about.
Dumpster, benches, parking spaces.
Ex, yeah. That would, that would help clarify that note a lot. Okay. So, are you gonna still, so you're gonna put a tree in that lot, in that spot?
Hmm.
Okay. Um, if you could just let us know the kind of tree you're gonna put in.
We're gonna do a magnolia.
Yeah.
A magnolia he was going to put in?
I like the Christmas lights and the trees.
Magnolia, magnolias are beautiful plants, but they're not, I wouldn't consider street trees. What, what you, what you're gonna wanna look for would be a street tree, salt tolerant, um, that is branching at a certain height on a.
Five species to choose from?
Uh-huh.
Do we sugar?
What a wonderful idea.
Um, well, I think you can, do you have that information? No, 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 no.
What about sugar maple? How about a, okay, I don't know.
Um.
Your, 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 your street tree in that location should, you have a mature height of twenty to twenty-five feet. And you should be low, upright branching, so people don't walk into.
If you, if you, if you look, if, if, if you look in, do one second, Harry. If you look in any of the planting books, you'll typically find they have these trees lumped by categories, and they will have them lumped by street trees. They will have them lumped by salt tolerance. They will have them lumped by maximum height, branching characteristics. So you just have to, you know, do a little research on that to pick those out. If you can't find any, let Howard know and I'm sure we can help. But what happens is, the board starts doing a lot of the work for applicants sometimes, and it's, it's not you guys in particular, but it's just trying to keep the lines drawn.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd be perfectly happy uh, leading it to the discretion of the town's tree ward.
Uh, I would not.
Okay.
Well, wait, wait a second. Were, were we saying that we have to come back for, for an approval for a street tree to replace it? Is that what you mean?
No, but when you, when you revise, when you revise these drawings.
Yep.
You're going to want to, that's gonna be one, one of the revisions you're gonna wanna show if you're putting in a tree there.
Right, but I, I, are you not going, I, I just, I mean, we, we'll agree to put in a street tree that'll be, you know, be one of the ones typically approved via subdivision.
Same tree that was there. And the rest of the trees are the same.
Yeah, we'll put in the same.
Yeah, but those trees are not necessary. Those trees, some of them are right, some of them are wrong.
Well, I know, but I just, I, I hate to leave a lot of these things like up in the air and, and.
Yeah, no, no, I'm with you. This isn't supposed to hold you up.
Okay, all right. I didn't understand. Okay.
So, when you come back, I'm assuming with one drawing that's, has these revisions on it, what it, you know, with the signs and what we've talked about, that somehow you will have a note that addresses this, that we just talked about.
Well, I was hoping that we were gonna get some sort of an approval tonight, and then with conditions that we deliver a plan. Is that what you're?
Let's see where it goes.
Okay.
All right. Um, questions? Ten past eight. Um, I think that was it for myself. We'll wanna wait for Tim to get back here.
He's right to my left.
Right here.
Oh, he never left. Hey, man. He just got closer to the fan.
He was trying to get crossbreeds.
Um, okay, so uh, I'm just gonna try to summarize and then what the board, what, what the board's pleasure for, for moving forward. What I've heard is, there's a question on the table about a handicap parking space, um, providing for that. Uh, there's a question on the table, I think, about um, the maintenance or paving of the parking lot. Howard, I, Bob, I think that was a question you raised. Just, just clean, cleaning that up was the term he used, but um, taking care of the.
Same that you can do to, to really improve it. I mean.
And then, um, I think, uh, I think those were, am I missing anything for Howard?
Well, I, I'll, I, I'd be happy to summarize. There's a couple revisions you're, you're requesting for, for approval of the site plan, and then there's suggestions.
Correct.
Uh, the suggestions are, for instance, um, to clean up the parking lot. Um, but request for amendments to the plan, uh, to me, is just a matter of a few revisions. Changing the four-inch to six-inch diameter bollard, a clarification that it's gonna be a concrete pad. Excuse me. Um, just uh, the, the waiver is gonna be a clarification of what sheet is the architect's ceiling. Um, and then there's gonna be removal of the two parking spaces and just the addition of uh.
The two parking spaces?
Uh, the, the two, um.
Showing how they're gonna resolve.
Removal of the two benches, sorry. And then, uh, just the new, the location and specification of the tree on the street.
And showing how they plan to resolve that parking space and the clearance.
Right.
We are definitely gonna, we're gonna delineate that with a.
How do you wanna do it?
Well, I'm gonna, we're gonna definitely delineate that. We're gonna put in an employee-only sign above that space where that, where, where you point out that clearance doesn't make it.
Right. So are you gonna be keeping the, the, the striping alignment, or are you gonna be moving it to an angled part?
We're gonna keep the striping alignment.
Okay.
What you're, what, what you're probably gonna wanna do, um, it doesn't look like you have, I'm just eyeballing, that if the spaces are nine feet wide. Uh, it looks like that's about the same distance to the dumpster right now.
Right.
So, you're probably gonna be, you, you, that's gonna be moving, I suspect, somewhat. And.
Could I make a suggestion? We could take out that last line, so essentially the last space is double wide, so a car could come in at an angle and, um.
Would, would that be the width of an HP parking spot?
So if, if, um, if you did that, let's stay on this point first. If you did that, um, then I would just recommend provide protection for your dumpster corners with some bollards. It's a recommendation. Don't have to do it, but guarantee you someone's gonna hit it.
And, and the last thing that needs to be added to the plan, that I understand, is just the addition of the active driveway sign underneath the awning.
Right.
Well, we have to look at that to make sure we don't hurt anybody with it sticking out of the building, so we can hang it from the awning.
That one's, that one's a recommendation to Howard, I think.
A recommendation, okay. Not required to be shown on the site, but a suggestion.
No. It's a suggestion to, but, but we're looking for good faith on taking a good shot at it.
We will.
I just say, just say.
Can I dry a balloon? I seriously received today a beautiful architectural lighting that puts out a spray of cobalt blue stars that I could hang from that side of the awning and illuminate the front of the, of that driveway.
You could get a go, any kind of go-bow, and you could change them and rotate them.
No, no go-bow. It would make anybody who's going near there.
Colors, changing. Spectrical lighting.
Sit up and pay attention, because there's these spray of cobalt stars on the, on the sidewalk.
I love it.
Um, okay, so.
That was not quite our.
I, I don't know if that's our department.
So then, let me go to, to the public for any comments, and then we'll bring it back to, to wrap this up.
I, I do have.
Doesn't go with the character.
Yeah, we'll bring it back to wrap it up. We're gonna go, we're gonna go to the public. Time out.
I'm sorry, we, we gotta move ahead. I'm sorry.
It's too hot.
And, and it's signed for public comments.
This needs, I, I, that needs.
Okay.
This needs to be in the minutes, please.
Okay, so this, this is uh, I wanna, I wanna, so you have one more thing?
I did have one more thing. Um, and that's, um, one of the things, I, I just realized this, um, is that there are the dr- the drawings really are of the front and a small section of the side. Would it be appropriate to ask for drawings of this?
They're not modifying that in any way.
This side?
This, this application is site plan approval just for the exterior alteration on the front.
Okay.
I, I, I understand your question where it's coming from. Um, I think where this is now is, is all they're required to do and unnecessary.
Sure.
But it's a good question. Okay, so with that being said, we know what, um, uh, where we're standing, uh, looking to, um.
Do you wanna close the public hearing?
Uh.
You're done taking comments from?
Yeah, no, I, I.
Taking comments from the public?
You guys ready to, you guys ready to close the public hearing? Cause I think we are. And how, how long after the public hearing do you have?
Any question with site plan approval?
Site plan approval. So, you, what you can do is, is if, if, if you vote and, and you close the public hearing, I can take a vote of the board. Under the conditions and stipulations of these things will be added to the plan, and then when the plan comes back, you sign it.
Okay.
How can we vote for the conditions if we don't see them written out?
He, 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 Howard went, Howard went through them.
We just, we just went through them.
Howard went through them.
I, I just went through them, but what you're doing is you, you're, you're approving the, the site plan approval. And then, when the plan comes back, the decision will be there, and you can sign that.
So the approval, the approval would be approval of the plan contingent upon.
The, the list of items that were just mentioned.
Howard just went through.
But we sign the plan. It's site plan approval. The plan's what we have to sign.
Mm-hmm. Right, and if they don't come back with the changes that.
We're not signing these tonight.
Right.
Oh, no.
We don't sign it until they come back with the changes that we discussed, right?
Right.
And if they don't?
We don't.
Can I ask you a question? If I may interrupt, I apologize. Um, what would be your timing? Because obviously, this is.
I know.
So, i- i- I understand why you don't sign the plans, and I understand that they're conditioned. Um, but we would love to proceed at our own risk, because we have the building open right now. And we understand it's our responsibility that it's open. It's just, it's open and we have people waiting to start work.
Yeah, uh, well, I mean, as you said, it's your own risk.
Well, but I need your.
We're not gonna approve that.
I, I, the building inspector won't, well, yeah.
The only way that you can proceed with that work on the exterior, I'm, I'm sorry, Jill.
No, please, it's okay.
Is if they approve the, the, the application for site plan approval.
So.
If I don't deliver to you, though, the plans.
Can we do this? Can we approve this plan contingent upon this stuff coming back being correct? Well.
And if it doesn't come back correct, we don't sign it.
Don't sign, and I don't know how you stipulate that they're at risk for, you know, not following through, but.
Cause I get penalized every day for a zoning violation, and you can't enforce that.
So, I, I, that's fine with me. I think that would work.
So what we, if I may, I apologize for interrupting again, but what we could do is you could always say, we're willing to sign it, which means they can go forward, continue the work. Then, I don't know if, if this, I don't know how the board likes to sign plans. I don't know what ends up happening, but let's assume you come in and you sign them during the week, and somebody does it, then that's fine. But let's say you don't wanna sign them until your next meeting. What you can then do is direct the building inspector to issue what we call a conditional occupancy permit, cause we would have occupancy permit before your next meeting. And then if we don't give you what your conditions are, he doesn't issue a permanent and we get closed down.
Sounds like a temporary.
It is. Cause I, we are gonna do what we say. That's why I have no issue doing that.
I don't know.
I just, I'm leery of that personally, because as one member, because we're setting a precedence.
We've gotten burned.
That's what I, that's what I'm trying to.
Well, I don't.
You gotta have a power.
But I, I don't, I, I don't know what we're at risk for. So if you play it out, um, and I'm thinking, and I'm thinking out loud, you approve this contingent upon, um, and so they have to go ahead, uh, in that. And then, we won't be signing this until the next meeting. That's how that would happen. So, the drawings would show up at the next meeting. We would review it. We would all make sure that those.
You have the decision as well?
Have the decision. Would all say, yep, everything's here. Um, then we'd sign it, done. Um, and if it wasn't all there, uh, then we don't sign it. It's not approved, and they do not have any occupancy permit.
But they, the building inspector has that responsibility to close you down.
And that's easy to do. But we.
That's not easy to do. That's a big step.
It's, it's easy to do, because if we accept a conditional occupancy permit, our, don't forget, we're a licensed, we're a licensed entity. We can't operate without the building inspector's approval. So.
I guess what I'm.
It's not like a house where somebody goes in on a temporary and then doesn't wrap it up. This is a licensed business that's licensed through the state and your Board of Selectmen.
I, I mean, I guess, I guess.
Carries a big stick.
I guess where I'm going is, um, with, with this for myself, is that I'm familiar with the restaurants. I'm learning more about Jill as, as I sit here, um, through, on the board, uh, again, and, um, I, I have all the confidence in the world in, in these people. I, I, there's nothing that's fly-by-night about it, or there's no flags that are coming up for me in terms of sloppy work, drawings that aren't, you know, I, so I'm, I'm, so that's me. I'm comfortable going ahead in that direction. Um.
I'm satisfied with the conditions. I think we, we all thought about it and put our two cents in.
So, um, could we, uh?
Is there more that you would like to?
No, I think the conditions are there. It's just that, you know, we're gonna take our word for it. Now, I, I understand.
Not really. I mean, that's the point, is we're.
We are taking our word for it.
Not really. They will not be able to run their business if they don't follow through.
Right. They can spend all money that they want between now and then.
Can schedule them for the next meeting and then finish it and do it all clean?
Do you, the, the, the last, the last thing they're gonna wanna do as a business is to spend this money to get everything ready to open and to not follow through on these little tiny details.
Yeah, removing a paragraph.
And lose, and lose, uh, their money.
So who is going to go see that all of those details are completed?
Well, the details. Well, the details are in the drawing. Right, and then the approval of the building permit is the building inspector.
And the building inspector is gonna make sure I comply with your conditions, and I'm gonna submit that amended plan. Poor Richard's gonna get a call from me tomorrow morning asking where it is. So Howard's gonna get it ASAP, so you can get it in your, in your, um, email, and we will deliver that to the building inspector, cause we plan on building in accordance with those conditions that you issued to us this evening.
So, could we, uh, do I have a motion from anybody?
Uh, you need to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, so we are gonna close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion, for a second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, so now looking for a motion to approve this, uh, project as submitted with the, um, contingent upon the modifications list that Howard, uh, read into the minutes, so...
Second.
Can you, uh, hold on?
Sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Would you repeat the question?
The motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve site plan application contingent upon conditions set forth.
And that's, that's set forth is the list that...
We specify the site plan application of Seventeenth through Nineteenth.
That's, that's fine.
West Main Street.
And just to reiterate the conditions that you're approving.
We're still in discussion, yeah?
For discussion, question? The, the HP is, is just a suggestion, and it's not something that was going to be added. The HP parking, so it was a suggestion, so we don't know at this point, at this point, I don't know if it is or is not gonna be shown on the plan.
Correct, I don't, that, it's a suggestion, yep, it's up in the air, now, it's not, it's not something...
It's not definitive that it will be shown.
Correct.
I'd like that suggestion, as well as cleaning up the parking lot, to be included in...
Well, here, here's the problem, but here's the problem with that, i- i- it's not as easy as that, because they don't, they don't own this right-of-way.
I, I understand this, but they own this.
Yeah, but as su, but as soon as you, and I'm not an ADA expert, although I deal with it every day, that's, I'm not the state, as soon as you improve this parking lot, and you provide handicap parking spaces, you trigger a threshold for providing access from these spots to this door, and to simply have that accessway go through this gravel-rutted, uh, two-way, uh, private way...
Is that any improvement, I mean, really, it is...
Is not, well, is not, is not okay, and is not acceptable, and is actually potentially, uh, creating a dangerous situation. The only way you could put handicap spaces in there...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, the only way you could put handicap spaces there is that if you provided a traveled way to that door that met ADA requirements, and then that's requiring work in the space that they don't own.
No, no, I understand it, um, all I'm saying is that at present, it's dangerous to people who are fully able, who try to walk through there.
Yes.
And that's the point, the only point, it's the reason why I make the suggestion, because they own it, somebody's gonna fall, and... So rehiring Jill.
So let me just, so you're talking about, you're talking about the suggestion of the paving.
Not necessarily paving, but...
We're going, the, the suggestion about, look, we have to talk to, we don't have the right to just improve the backyard and make it perfect, cause we don't, it's not in our lease, but we absolutely, I didn't know it was in a deplorable condition, Mark said, I'm gonna look at it, I'm gonna talk to the guy, I mean, I know that's not a condition, but we're gonna talk to the guy and we're gonna look at it, of course.
Sounds like the safest thing would be to have all my employees go back there, cause then they won't be going back in and out.
Might not be a bad idea.
And that may end up being all employee parking, who knows?
Can they, can the handicap person use the back door?
Folks...
Up in the kitchen.
Really?
The kitchen is there.
Yeah, we're all, we're, public hearing's closed, you know, so, any more discussion?
All right, then I, I understand.
Couldn't really take that information.
Okay, so...
Wow.
All right, uh, no more, no more discussion, um, all right, all in favor? Aye.
No.
Uh, all opposed?
Nay.
Three, four, two, no. Asses, all set.
Very much appreciate it, and we will deliver those plans to you immediately, thank you.
My employees, thank you.
It's ninety-three now, I had to tell you, I keep looking. I keep looking right over there, you can't, can you see it?
Sure, five-minute breathing exercise.
During your five-minute break, please sign the A and R.
Howard, I'll send everything to you tomorrow.
Okay, we're back. All right. Uh, we'd like to welcome back and open back up the Georgetown Planning Board Wednesday, July twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, uh, meeting, uh, public hearings. And up next is the special permit for sixty East Main Street Athletic Facilities, which is continued from May twenty-eighth. Howard, I don't know if there's anything you want to say before we go to the applicant?
The, the, um, materials that are going to be discussed tonight will receive by the board on, uh, electronically on Thursday and in hard copy, uh, distributed on, on Monday. Um, so, uh, we have, in the supplemental packet you have tonight, here is, um, a letter, uh, email rather, from, uh, Larry Graham.
Is that the one that's all capitals?
Yeah, that's the way Larry types.
Yeah.
So, he's excited about everything.
Yeah, I'm sure he's not yelling.
Um, having to do with, with what he could do in review of the documents.
It was, um, appreciated of Larry to respond last minute like this.
Yeah.
So he reviewed these, the last of it?
The, the hard copy you received, that is, was he received, uh, and that's what his email is about.
And these are corrected to this?
No, to the, the, he, his comments in that email have to do with this set of drawings. So, there has not been another revision after that email.
This is his review of these.
Oh, I thought we were giving the last of it.
Well, this is supposed to be the last of it.
Okay.
Okay, it is supposed to be the last, and then he, he reviewed it.
Okay.
So, with that, gentlemen.
Can I, can you, is it long, the, what he said, or is it?
You guys didn't get a copy?
We haven't seen that.
I'll, I'll read this. Well, this is what happens when everything goes last minute.
Maybe Larry doesn't know how to CC.
No, that's not it.
Oh, okay.
He worked extra hard to get this done on time, to get this done, you know, when it should have been in a long time ago.
But it's just a Howard.
In brief, there's three points.
That's not the point. So, do you guys want to start? And we can read this in however you want to start.
Uh, I'll do a recap of where we are since the last meeting and, um, we want to go through Larry's email after, I guess we can do that. Um, the last, uh, meeting, we discussed, uh, a few bullet points that we would address for this meeting. We provided a, um, a letter to Howard, um, after that last meeting outlining what those were, and, um, if there were any items outstanding beyond that, um, we requested that the board provide us information on what those might be. Um, we didn't hear anything, so we took that as being final.
Well, you, you, you received, uh, we received a letter from you on June twenty-sixth, right?
Uh, correct.
And then I sent a, a letter back to you on June thirtieth.
Yep.
And then, what you received with this last packet was a response to all the issues. So as I understand, we agreed on, on everything, so.
Uh, correct. Uh, so we addressed those items, we can go through them. Um, there was a licensing agreement with the New East Community Church, and, um, that has been signed, it's been signed, it should be, uh...
Wait, turn out.
You're on your July seventeenth.
Yeah, you're on your, you're on your, uh, June...
Just sorry, for the board, you're reviewing your July seventeenth letter?
Correct, I'm sorry.
So, you want to be looking at the outstanding items of the June thirtieth letter?
July seventeenth.
I'm just...
A- after the last meeting.
I'm just looking at the date on it.
They sent, they sent that letter out. In my response, the letter...
Is the thirtieth.
Is the thirtieth. And then, they issued another letter, which was issued, was issued to the board electronically. Um, and you have, right there, Rod, he's going to be going over the letter of July seventeen. This is the letter of July seventeen.
Okay.
The one that's in the report.
I just stick to there.
Got it, got it. All right. Okay.
Uh, so that talks about the outstanding items that we discussed in the last meeting. And one of the first one was the, uh, completion of the license agreement with the New East Community Church, um, to do work on their, on their property. And that, at the time we submitted this, uh, was in draft form. It's since been signed and executed by the church. Um, there's an exception in this paragraph. Uh, they are no longer waiving the no tree cut zone that is, uh, on the, the right-of-way coming through the beginning portion of the property. Um, and there's a revision.
Can I add to that? The, the licensing agreement that the church has signed is in the selectman's office, waiting for the board of selectmen to, to review and...
Right. He signed it in front of Mike Farrell, the board of selectmen have to sign it on Monday, as well as a letter of understanding on the plowing only has to be up to the top of the hill, past the appro, past their entrance.
We discussed the license agreement with, um, UFP Technologies regarding proposed work on their property. And, um, because the church is no longer waiving the no tree cut zone, we actually removed the sidewalk in that portion of, of the, of the driveway.
You say they're no longer waiving it?
That's correct.
So they did waive it at one point?
They verbally waived it at one point, if I understand.
The pastor said he'd waive it, but when he went to his board, they, they didn't waive it. It was six months ago, he said they waived it and people have changed.
So this is why we put things in writing?
Yes. No, we're, we're right. We were planning to, but, right.
Uh, this, okay, just pointing that out, okay.
Um, one of the clarifications around this stuff, we are putting United Farm on a construction as well, even though we have no plans of being on their property. But as we put on the fence, if we find we have to move a rock or something, we don't want to have to stop the project to get there.
Sure, yeah.
So, he has to go to his board, he has the authority to do it, but he will have his, he is going to present his to the board and should have no problems either.
So, as we stand now, we don't intend to do work on their property. So we haven't provided the final agreement, but as I understand, that's, it's in the works for them as an in-case.
Okay.
Third bullet on the, so the first bullet on the second page, clarification of language regarding utility easement in the town maintenance of the driveway. And Jim mentioned that there is a, a letter that, um, states that the maintenance will be only to the top of the hill.
Right, drafted by town legal and then submitted to Mike Farrell, and he will have the board sign that as well.
That's the language we got electronically?
Do we have a copy of that?
You received it electronically.
That was, that was what you forwarded?
It, it, those two agreements just discussed forwarded onto the board, were actually in the Word format, they weren't in PDF.
DocX.
Yeah.
Nice to get them in PDF.
Um, we provided a response to Larry Graham's letter, his letter dated June tenth. We provided a response to that letter. Uh, last time we were here, we provided a draft response, um, I think the day before the meeting, and, um, there wasn't enough time obviously for everyone to thoroughly review that, so we formally, uh, addressed those, those comments from that letter. Uh, and that is actually attached to this letter as well. Uh, we corrected a dimension on C five oh seven regarding, uh, the length of a handicap stall. We provided a, um, AutoCAD file on CD format, uh, with the survey points that, um, Gale Associates did some surveying, mostly of the driveway, and we also shot a few spot grids going a little bit back into the property to do some confirmatory, um, investigation of what the previous engineer had, had done for the existing issue plan. And there were, um, a couple of contour lines that, for one reason or another, had, were crossing, uh, some of the water bodies that didn't look quite right, so we, we fixed that. And, and those were essentially the items. If you want to get into our Larry Graham response items, um, we can do that. I know Larry's not here, and I haven't read his email response yet.
What, what if, um, if the board's okay, I read into the record Larry's response so that the, the, uh, public can hear also, and then, and when I'm finished at, we'll go to the board to, to start comment, uh, questions. So this is a, an email from Larry Graham, our technical review agent, um, that he sent out today at eleven-thirty. Um, Howard, I have reviewed the, I'm summarizing. Howard, I have reviewed the plans for the above project and have the following recommendations. One, revise the paved width from twenty to eighteen feet. Two, generally follow the existing grades versus making it a consistent four and a half percent. Three, do not disturb the banking and vegetation along the westerly side of the drive. This will be possible by adjusting the design per my first two comments. Keep proposed shrub plantings on plans along westerly side of drive noted as infill planting. If plans are revised per these recommendations, I would recommend planning board acceptance specific to this portion of the plan application.
Yep, that's right.
That's it, that's it. So...
And, and I just want to add to that. Those are new comments because the plans were revised per discussion at the last meeting about the option of removing the sidewalk. So the, this isn't that, this is something that could have been addressed a long time ago. This is something that came up with the revised set.
Correct.
Just, just to clarify.
Correct.
And...
Just to clarify, that was our first design, two and a half years ago, when we were required to put a sidewalk in as part of planning board procedure.
Now, now let, let, let's not go there, because when I go, no, 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 because if we are...
I'm not going there, I'm not going there negative, I'm just saying we were thinking the same.
Well, you just did.
No, I'm saying we're thinking on the same page, which is good.
Okay, okay, okay.
One historical perspective.
We're not against, we're not against that plan.
No, but what I'm saying is, don't go back to the beginning where someone said something, because, just don't do that. Okay, so, Robert?
Yes, um, questions? Uh, did you get a copy?
I, I have it, yep.
Okay. Do you want to make any comments on these now? Do you want to come back and, and cycle through this again?
Jim and I, uh, actually discussed, without having this email, a very similar plan, um, expecting that Larry might, and the board might have similar thoughts and conditions. Now that we're taking out the sidewalk, the only reason that we flattened the roadway to four and a half percent is because we had a sidewalk there and it had to be ADA accessible.
So this isn't going to blow you up. This is not going to blow you up.
In, in short, I agree with Larry's comments.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
That's really all I have to say.
If there is no sidewalk, in your opinion, as an engineer, if there is no sidewalk, and pedestrians were to try to access, and this board were to narrow that roadway from twenty feet of pavement to eighteen feet of pavement, would that prevent, would that present any kind of a hazardous condition where there's no sidewalk and it's a vegetated area that people can't walk on? So, I'm just picturing people walking up the driveway on the pavement, and we'd be effectively taken two feet away from where they could dive to if someone was coming down that hill a little too quickly. Is it safe in your opinion?
Well, that, we are, the roadway now, it does vary from about eighteen to twenty feet. So in some places, we might be narrowing it a little bit, but in other places, it's probably going to be about the same. I think that it all depends on the logistics of the site. If indeed folks are walking as a destination to this site from other points in town, if that happens often, um, sure. If you have vehicular traffic at the same time as pedestrian traffic, that could pose an issue. Um, I think that the discussion that we've had is it's the same condition that it's always been, there's parking there now. I think the majority of people will be, you know, driving or driven to the site.
And you don't think there'll be additional foot traffic with the addition of, um, a ball field, a skateboard park, and a dog park?
I'm told from, uh, the recreation folks that there probably will be some additional foot traffic.
And that's my concern. And I'm wondering how, if we don't have a sidewalk, signage, or some way to, well, I, to mitigate the risk.
Caution sign right where the, uh...
Just to be clear, no pedestrian access. There is a prohibited pedestrian access, maybe vehicular access only?
I think some traffic warning and traffic calming devices could be, such as, you know, speed limit signage and, um, pedestrian, pedestrian caution, possibly some speed bumps.
Slow children.
Yeah, those sorts of things.
Yeah.
The only other thing, um, that, um, I always thought of as a minor detail that I figured the board would, uh, the parking rack would come back in the minor plan application. If this were ever approved, would be, um, the sign.
Yeah.
How people from other communities would know that there's a park back there. Um, I, I didn't see anything on the plan showing a sign or a location of a sign, this is a special permit. Um, I'm, I'm used to seeing that. Um, I, I always assumed you'd come back as a modification.
Whether this be a lane or a road, it's going to have to be a lane sign or a road sign.
It's a driveway.
You, you're talking, you're talking, you're talking about a sign for the park.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably not going to show up on too many people's GPS.
I mean, I don't know, but, I mean, we, we just put up a park sign in American Legion last year after twenty-five years. It has an advantage and it has a disadvantage. As soon as we put it up, everybody from out of town knew where it was.
What, what you could do, Jim, is you could, you could simply create a placeholder on the plans that get approved. Doesn't mean you have to put it in.
Okay.
Versus coming back and doing it later and, and just...
Yeah, that's fine.
Where this park didn't get any federal, excuse me, oh, were you done?
Um, I'll, I'll yield to Tony, anything.
I thought you were finished.
Anything.
Are you, are you through? No, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't want, I don't want to get into these conversations that go off, so...
Um, I, I can't think of anything other than the, the safety of, um, people trying to walk up that street, which I think you're probably going to have a few people trying to walk their dog down Main Street and, you know, up to the park. Seems kind of nice. The idea to walk to a park seems kind of good, recreational, ride your bike. I don't know, maybe it's a crazy idea, you should jump in your car. You should, you should definitely get in your car.
Especially if you go recre...
Anything else?
Uh, the sign. Where it is, the size.
Okay.
Just so that folks from other communities that may be coming to play softball there in a league would, um, would be able to know, know that's not a church driveway, that's actually the access to...
We'll go to public comment after a while. So, but you'll definitely, we'll...
And that's, that's basically it.
Okay.
The only questions I have.
I figured what I was saying now. Oh, I was going to ask you, are you, you're going to have other communities coming in? And this is just a small play, uh, baseball field?
No, but it's a baseball field, so that auction, like American Legion, we have mostly much ball leagues, and, but there is, it's mostly town, but there is other, there's Little League games, so there are out of town people coming in.
Oh, I see.
And most people from out of town found the American Legion over the years, they missed the first two times, and then they eventually found it. So, but we have park signs there now, there's a little park sign.
I understand American Legion was provided by a grant, so this is a private one, private money is going into this.
That was Elliot and Camtak that donated that land for a park.
But the improvements and everything, they came, didn't come from town money, it came from grant money. Before you were...
I got, I have those plans, that grant was denied at town meeting, they...
Oh, was it?
Yeah. The, that tennis court was originally with a bandstand, wasn't it?
Oh, that was recently.
Yeah, that was nineteen, nineteen seventy-nine.
Recently.
Yeah.
I have those plans, but that, that was not passed, that didn't pass.
That's okay.
Because at the town, the town didn't want the park open to out of town residents, which it really is now because it's a park, but at that time it wasn't.
I think you've done it as best you can, drive their locations to the site.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. I know it's been challenging for all of us.
Okay, um, let me just, uh, I, I, in short, I agree with Larry and I agree with your agreement with Larry. Um, but I did want to point out some things on the drawings. So I'm looking at C one oh four.
It should be on the bottom right-hand corner. It's the grading plan.
Yeah, it's the grading and drainage site plan, sheet one, C one oh four.
That might be it, right there, number eleven.
There you go.
Yep.
Still have your laser pointer.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, so, in this section here, if you match the existing grades, then all of the grading that you show here, which the showing of the grading there does not save the trees.
Right.
So...
If we, if we follow Larry's comments and go back to the existing slope, like you're saying.
Right.
I think that that grading there goes away.
So...
And it saves the trees.
Makes sense.
I think so.
Yep. So, so you follow the existing grades, um, and then, it looks to me that at this point, at this point here, you have your high point here.
Yes.
Existing high point is about here, it's one oh seven.
Right.
And that gives you about a seven percent slope. And then you also have a two percent apron down here, which is great. S, if you match that seven percent grade, all of this wallwork goes away too.
Yeah, I believe that's right.
And then you matching here really nicely. The main difference, what it does, which I'm sure you're aware, is that's going to take your watershed here, and it's going to push it back to where it originally is going, as it's going now, which is fine.
Right, we're trying to keep, keep more in the back.
Yeah, which is great. Um, then, so then, there are two, there's, these now, this takes care of the part that is part of the public's view shed and corridor and part of what the planning board's job is. This part here is something that, this is more of a recommendation. Um, but if you did, if you did this, if you took, um, this walk, there are two things you could do. You could take this walk as it is, and you could put in a retaining wall on this side of the walk. Because right now, what you're showing is you're showing this is all graded out, and so all the trees that are in there, there are some like sixty-inch trees in there, they're huge. If you put a retaining wall in here, you're going to have a retaining wall that starts there at about twelve inches high, and it's going to be a ha-ha wall, so you're going to be looking over it, so when you're driving up here, you won't see a wall.
Right.
And you have a fence here anyways, so that can act as your guardrail.
Right.
The wall will be at its highest somewhere in here, which is going to be about six feet, and then it goes down to, back to zero. That's one option of how to save all of that stuff. Another option for how to save all of this stuff is, and this is just a what if, what if you took the sidewalk, um, and moved it down here, kept the edge of road right where it is, and then take your apron and put it down here? That would give you that much more room. It would give you that five feet of no disturb where you could put your retaining wall and get back to existing grade even sooner. That's just a, that's just a thinking out loud, you know, you guys look at it.
Yeah, we also put a note for the same reason. There's a new, there was a note from, not this rep, but the rep previous, because that big tree you're talking about, that big elm?
Yeah.
We thought maybe we could put behind it or split the sidewalk two and two and go around it to keep it there, because, no, we, we, we wanted to hammer that out and have the flexibility and the design to do that, so there's a note in that section relayed into that.
The problem with that, Jim, is that the trees in here, that, that with their roots and how long they've been, if you, as soon as you go in and you put a sidewalk in, you're going to cut the roots.
Okay.
So, you can snake around it, but...
Like I said, I, I'm glad, we were thinking the same, on the same type of thing.
So, that, that was what I wanted to comment on the site plan. Um, just a question of, you have the crosswalk attaching to the travel dial into the church parking lot?
Why do we have a crosswalk?
Well, that's, I'm getting it.
It's because you would have the option to park if, if folks were parking in that, in that parking lot, you'd need somehow to get to the sidewalk, so we put in a crosswalk there. And it's tough to see, but on one oh one, we have a little bit of guardrail on either side.
I'm confused, I'm very confused. Are you talking about the church's private property, that parking lot?
Which people are parking on now to go down to the young, the little escape, I would...
And we'd be making...
They've got a crosswalk here, which ties in here, which is then the church's parking lot, they have access to it.
I'm sorry, yeah, I, 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 I don't believe that that's a good idea.
Do, do you have an agreement?
All right, well, I, time out, time out, time out. I, I don't want to go off on a tangent right now. I want to stay talking about, about what, all right? You can hold that and we'll get back to it. Um, so, first question that came up for me was, why do you have the crosswalk there? And you just answered it.
Hmm.
So it's to pick up the parking lot.
Yeah, pretty much.
Second question, it's, it's not a question, it's a suggestion. You might want to think of pulling it out of the travel dial, um, or somehow, uh, separate it, uh, it's just a suggestion.
No, it's not a, it's not a big, um, what about when you say, what's that, road section?
Your road section... Your road section, um, you, you have two road sections, A A and B B. When I look at the A A section, the plan, uh, scales to eighteen feet, but the section itself says twenty feet. So, I think that's where you do have eighteen feet, and that's where, so you're gonna wanna make sure your section matches that.
I will check that, I don't believe, I think what you might be scaling to is the no tree cut line is on.
I'm just scaling where A A is shown, um.
It looks like-
Which is sheet one oh one, C one oh one.
Right. Oh, on the actual section, it scales as eighteen feet, but we're showing it as twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, this, this is probably a case of that detail not being drawn to scale, as details oftentimes are, so.
Okay.
So the correct dimension is?
You wanna, this correct dimension's eighteen, right?
It's shown right now as twenty, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna revise it down to eighteen, that's what we'll do.
So then this section would change to eighteen, okay, um. Oh, um, and then on all of your detail sheets, sheets one through seven, details, C five oh one, five oh two, five oh three, five oh C.
Some of the text is a little-
If you look at the titles of the details.
Yep, that's a, that is some reason when we make the PDFs, all the text gets screwed up.
I just have to ask, when you see something like that, how come you submit it?
It was, it's, it's one of those things where you make the PDFs after they're printed.
Mm-hmm.
And they print fine, and then you scan it and the P, you make the PDF.
Yeah.
And it doesn't get caught, because when you look at the print that you have on the, on the table, it looks fine.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, these, so these were, anyways, uh, so, there were, all the details need to, that needs to be checked. I think that was, yeah, and then. Okay, um, we're gonna go to, uh- Tim, Tim talk, yeah, yeah. Um, Howard, do you wanna say something now?
No, I just, just wanna add, um, that if, i- it's, and the engineer for the applicant can, uh, agree to this, I, I believe it's true, if, if the road, um, goes down to eighteen, and this is, I think implied from Larry's email, the sidewalk's gone, and you go back to the existing grades, then this, the whole concerns of the storm line, I believe, are then removed, and, and even the- Yeah, and the, the, the trees would be preserved, and one of the outstanding items that was listed in, in Gail's letter about the, providing the information of the four and a half percent, all the pervious discussions on pervious pavements are gonna go away too.
Correct.
It will resolve a lot of the, the consternation of, of, of the board and a lot of what was going back and forth, so.
Great, okay, um, like to go to the public for any comment? Introduce yourself for the-
Alan Olson.
Thank you.
I'm out of the park and rec, and nothing more than a citizen here, but I, I wanna ask one thing is, did let, did, um, Larry Graham, did he do any, did he do any of this work or part of this work pro bono? Or was it charged, and if it was charged, how much does it cost the taxpayers of some magnitude of Georgetown to have this guy doing these reviews, when it's an agency, agency, we get plenty of work out here, so some magnitude, was it ten thousand dollars? A hundred thousand, fifty thousand?
Geez, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare answer that without seeing some invoices and vouchers for that, I wouldn't-
No idea.
Go ahead, you can throw that out, but I'm not throwing out any numbers, Eric.
Well, uh, also the planning board didn't, uh, resolve, this wasn't a, a technical review or an M account, a fifty-three AG account.
Yeah.
So Park and Rec were the ones paying the invoices.
I, I, I think, I think to your, I think to your point, um, I'm not sure this is your point you were making, but I, I think to that question, um, how to say, there's been a lot of, um, unnecessary work that's happened on these drawings over the course of whatever that has cost this project to exceed whatever your fee is now, a hundred and fifty thousand or something, um.
Well, I'm ju, I'm just, I'm just a tax, I'm a taxpayer here, and it's not, it's not a position of they didn't do right, you didn't do right, or other boards that, that have to keep adding, I just wanted to get a feel for, if I don't mind.
Yeah.
How much money, out my words, I say is wasted on peer review, when maybe it should have been a pro bono type of thing.
Oh, I don't-
The guy doesn't have work for town. Now, what is the magnitude, that's all, that, if it's forty thousand, that's fine, that's the answer.
We can get you that information, I, I don't, I don't know what his fee is for this. Do, do you, we, you wanna say that answer?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the treasurer of the, the Park and Rec that's been paying all the bills is right over there.
Yeah, Larry.
That's, that, and that's fine, this Park and Rec, I wanna finish, that's Park and Rec, and that's that number, I wanna finish this question and this issue, so Howard, can you find out at some point what that number will be and we can provide that information?
Sure, but I'll be tossing the Park and Rec about it, because I never-
That's, 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 that's fine, that's fine, they don't-
The treasurer pays the bill, it's CPC money.
I'm talking about Larry Graham.
Right. Review the bills to the-
Larry Graham, what his bill is going to be.
Right.
Right, and he hasn't submitted a bill for this.
He had, he's submitted a few over the year.
Not for this work.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever, whatever.
Some order of magnitude, that's all I'm asking for, I'm not, I don't know.
I'm Richard Abelman, I'm on the Park and Rec, I'm the treasurer, and I, I, I didn't bring the figures with me today downstairs in my car, but I would imagine it's somewhere between five and eight thousand dollars, um, it would take, more than five, but probably less than eight, something like that.
And, and frankly, I think it was money well spent.
I don't give a-
I'm sorry, I, I think it was money well spent, if, if that's reasonable amount, and, uh, Larry, Larry did a lot of good work for it.
Yeah, he did a lot of, that's what I was gonna say.
It's in everybody's interest that he put his hands on money.
Again, once again, it's a town board and it would seem like somebody who does a lot of work, I might wanna consider it in the future.
When the project started, not only did Larry assist in the design, but also Nick Cracknell was involved with it. And so, there was a lot of bo, to bono work, if you wanna call it that.
Give away.
Beforehand, because, well, who, the engineer they had before needed direction, and he was looking for help. So Larry had, several times, he had gone over to the office and assisted, and that was all, that wasn't registered as paid.
Okay, so let's go to, did you have anything else, Eric? Okay, anybody else have anything, please?
I had one, um, Julia, I have a Park and Rec, um, just to address some of the, the questions, Harry, that you had about the signs going up, if there's no sidewalk there, at, with pedestrian traffic, just because American Legion Park, which I think has a lot of pedestrian traffic, I, I would just go on a limb and say fifty percent people walk in, fifty percent people drive in. Those are both private ways with no sidewalks and cars are coming both ways on both those roads. And we don't have signs like about pedestrians take caution or blind driveways, and, I mean, I don't know, I've only lived here three and a half years, but I've never heard of anyone getting hit by a car or, you know, jumping out of the way or something with cars. And there's quite a bit of car traffic with both those accessways to American Legion Park. And I don't know, I mean, with three years on the, on Park and Rec, I've never really heard of anyone like coming, complaining to our board about no sidewalks or no signs, so I was just thinking, you know, that's kind of a point to make, like, that hasn't, I don't really think been a huge issue, so I don't really know what the huge difference is with this new park, with people walking in and out if there's not a sidewalk right up to the street, if there's not an American Legion Park. I mean, I know they're two different parks, but it's just the only comment I wanted to make about that.
Anyone else? Okay, um, how would the board like to proceed with this at this point?
Motion to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Been a motion to close the hearing, there's been a second, has there been any, will there be any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous to close the public hearing.
All right, Tim, will you with a second?
Yeah.
These are gonna be short notes, and it's coming up.
Kelly has a ten minutes file.
All right, so as far as proceeding ahead, um, what I've heard is there, there, there's a number of changes that has to happen to the drawings, um, and, uh, yeah, the board has two options. One is to approve contingent upon, which I think is enough there to wait, just get the drawings back, but I'm willing to go either way, uh, till the next drawings get submitted, next meeting, review, say you have thumbs up and be done with it.
Well, in the spirit of what we just did with the last, um, site plan approval, where we, um, approved something with the plans being promised to come to us.
Fine.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve-
This is a special permit, too.
A special permit, um, with the, um, conditions, our new condition that, our condition that, uh, the plans are amended as discussed in this meeting.
And, and I just wanna clarify, be, before you vote to approve, we vote, th- this board's already voted on the waiver, so.
Wait, do we have what those, um, this is discussion for-
Well, we need a second first, second, okay, so discussion?
Yeah, I, I think we need, uh, the changes to the, uh, drawings articulated as clearly as they were for, uh, the spot.
That's a crazy name.
I don't know anybody else who thought of that.
I wish they reconsidered.
The, the only, um, the, Howard, correct, this, what I've got is that there was to show on the plan a location for a sign with a note just saying the size of the sign.
The location of the sign.
Location of the sign, yep, and with a note that describes the size of the sign.
Future sign or-
Future, future sign, yeah, um, to regrade the front entry to follow the existing grades up to the high point of, of existing one oh seven, plus or minus.
Mm-hmm.
And then to save all of those trees because that grading matches existing there. Um, it's worth saying that, I think, versus just saying match existing grades. Those are the only items I heard, the other recommendations about what you can do in the back, you know, that's more Park and Rec money, that's more town tax money to do drawings again for that, but what you're weighing there is the potential to save all those trees on that side, it's your decision, your call.
It might be cheaper than counting those trees now, cause some of them, like you said, they're, I mean, we looked at the bigger tree.
You're, you're close to the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me, um, so, uh, so those were the three items.
Uh, road width?
Good one, road width, that was the fourth one. Eight, eighteen feet.
So, future locate, uh, fu- future location of the sign in the front, um, returning the, uh-
Thanks, Bob.
The roadway to the entrance, uh, existing grade, the roadway width of eighteen feet, and what was the fourth?
Saving the trees.
Saving the trees.
Is that eighteen feet to the top?
It needs to be just spelled out.
It'll be spelled out in your special permit.
Okay, then that's fine, then that's fine.
So those are the, the three required amendments to the plan.
Is it, is it eighteen feet from, um, one thirty-three all the way back, or is it?
Right now, it's eighteen feet up to that, uh, point where the, the, your gate is.
The driveway, your gate to the game.
Then if they wanna make it eighteen feet, they can.
Cool.
So do you wanna, uh, amend your motion?
To have the motion include those three? To have it include those three, no.
Okay.
List them as the, as the things that were mentioned.
And as along with Larry's?
So, it covers Larry's, that's-
Yes, that's ex- exactly, that's the thing.
Um, I'm pretty sure, let's cover them till, keep proposed shrub plantings on plan along Westerly side of the drive. Uh, that's gonna be done, yeah, as it is, but do not disturb banking, yet that was the biggie, and follow the existing grades and revise the pavement.
Mr. Chairman, question, does this have to be a roll call vote or is it special permit?
I didn't think so, doesn't it, I, I didn't think it did.
No, it's a super majority, but it's all right.
And, and the super majority is, is for the four voting members.
And I can't vote. So, um, all right.
There, there's a motion on the, uh, to approve the application of the athletic fields, including the three conditions, so.
And, um, I guess my last comment with the discussion part is I would strongly recommend this board to, uh, support this project and vote affirmative. So, closing discussion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, zero, one abstaining. It's been a long haul, um, great work, everybody, I know it hasn't been easy. Great, great work.
May I ask a question, and we're out of discussion and all that stuff, where are you with Concom, Jimmy?
We, um, we have a, um, why, once you, you got the-
Yeah, uh, we've met with Conservation, uh, once, I think it was two months ago now.
Okay.
Um, they hired a peer consultant as well.
Mm-hmm.
To review- BSC group, they walked the site and reviewed the wetlands, and we got a letter back from them, uh, last week.
And that's, that's-
We continue, we were supposed to meet with them last week, but we continued to have time to address their, their comments regarding the wetlands. And we'll go back before then, uh, in a few weeks, you know.
Just to know one of their major comments was, why didn't we take land to get away from the wetlands? And we'll be able to say, we got land from United Farm donated because of that, so, I mean, we did our best in that one corner there.
Is that the wetland line that locked down years ago?
I really would like to close this right now, guys.
When, when can we expect the, the plans to be revised to those, for a final for the board to, to sign?
Do you want, you want them to go to the next meeting, I would imagine?
Uh, next meeting is August thirteenth.
Two, that what she said?
Can we talk tomorrow about when you, you need those?
Right, we, we, we have until, um-
See you later.
Right, we'll talk tomorrow, because, uh, I need to see those to draft up the, the decision for the board.
So, so that takes care of, uh, so, we're now into-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, or any one from the public, there's no one from the public, so, any member have anything they wanna just put on the table? Not to get into discussion and resolving it, but to put on the table to get on an agenda for now, or?
I, I, the one thing I wanted to comment on was this business of contingent approval. We've run into issues with that before, but in thinking back, it was a little different. When it's just the plan.
Site plan.
Site plan, and it's the formality of those conditions being met, I think it's terrific. It allows people to get to work faster, get, get stuff done.
And I think you hit the nail on the head, it, the site plan allows you to do that effectively, and, and particularly. Anybody else have anything to add? I have one thing I just wanted to put out there, that, um, I would really like for the board to adopt, if you guys are so willing, that if it's not in the package, it's not introduced to these meetings.
How do you get it into the package?
Has to be submitted to Howard by X time prior to, you know.
One week prior.
The project.
One week prior.
The, the only problem with that is, it's always Larry Graham, three days before the meeting, that's the only problem.
Well, well here, well here-
It's our own review.
We get the submissions on Thursday, and Larry gets them on Thursday.
Then Larry gets them on Tuesday.
So, so, in that, but that's the kind of dialogue I wanna have, that if that's the case, then, then Larry does his, when he does his, based on when he gets it from us, but what I'd like to try to avoid is, is, I'd like to minimize the stuff we get, and if it's only Larry's comment, um, cause I really, I don't know about you guys, but I really struggle with getting five or six emails, you know, two days before the meeting with, with stuff, and this, this is no dispersion.
Don't get it seven days before, I don't wanna deal with it.
And we notify, and we let the applicant know, you let the applicant know very clearly upfront, and it's consistent with our bylaw, okay, so, um-
You, you can accept it, and you, I'll leave it up to the board, if you, if you want us to have them talk to you about what they're submitting, but after that, it's, thank you very much, we, we're not gonna comment on it now.
Motion to continue.
I have a, I have a quick thing too, that I was, I even talked to you about, but I'd like to, to- I'd like to, to, uh, discuss this one six five seventy-one bylaw, and I want to question K and P to see exactly what the discretionary powers of the pleading board is with that bylaw.
Seventy-one?
Yeah.
Which is?
Inclusionary bylaw.
Inclusionary bylaw.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of rumbling going on and different talk, and I'd just like to have K and P look at it, I wrote out certain things that if you wanted to make questions about it, just so that we'll know exactly where we are, and if in the future, put it on the list for any improvements, for amendments, whatever, because it, it shouldn't be this difficult, and, uh, how does the board feel about that?
I just wanna add to that, I'm more than happy to contact K and P about the discretion the board can do per the bylaw.
Good, that's what I...
But you're not gonna be able to talk about it to Turning Leaf, because that public hearing is closed.
I know it is, but the bylaw, the, the, the conditions are not done.
No, no, they're not, but, but I'm just saying, you're, you're...
We can't introduce something new.
That's not new clarification, she, she herself said that.
No, right, and that's fine, you can make it part of the board's discussion, but you can't make it part of the negotiation with the, the applicant.
Well, there's no negotiation with the applicant, we weigh it down.
Right.
We weigh it down.
That's what we're trying to find out. It seems like it's negotiating, and, and in my knowledge of the zoning bylaws, you have to follow the bylaws, if we go away from that, have we got that authority? Because waiving from your bylaw, you have to go to the zoning board of appeals, that's the process, so that's why I wanted to clear that up.
I think I'm a little lost here because I haven't seen any, any wording for the decision yet.
The, the hangup is the issue of, uh, the bylaw saying, um, a unit, and there's no flexibility in the bylaw of what a unit is, because is it a lot that's developed and then sold, or is it a lot that's sold undeveloped?
A unit is dwelling.
So, can we, can we get clarity, can we get an opinion from town council about that?
Yeah.
So that we can hang our hat on?
Yeah.
So, we know where we're staying?
Would the board wanna do that?
Fine with that.
I, 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 I think that would be helpful.
Are we paying for that?
Thank you.
We're paying for that, though, we can't vote on Turning Leaf.
You know what, I...
Can we throw that on Turning Leaf tab, or are we...
Oh, I, I'm not...
We'll leave money in the budget.
Oh, good, excellent, legal, our legal, great.
It's legal, right, you know?
That goes to some of them, okay.
All right, uh, so, um...
If, if you wanna continue with the agenda, or do you wanna go, because the items are not...
Can we do it in five minutes?
What else is on the agenda?
Oh, well, it's a, a executive session and Camelot Realty Trust, so...
No, I'm late.
You, you're not gonna be able to do the executive session in five minutes.
Okay, so, so the executive session is gonna get postponed.
Can we move the executive session to downstairs in the second floor, air conditioned meeting?
Right now?
Well, um...
Yes, you can.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, cause I mean, I'm croaking here too. I'll make a motion to, uh, enter into executive session, Mr. Chairman, for the purposes of discussion of litigation, the board will not be returning to public session, but will change its venue for that to the second floor meeting room of Town Hall. Guess it dies.
How do you feel?
Is that a second?
I can't participate in it, I don't know what it is, I'm gonna butter to this.
What?
I'm gonna butter to Little Hill.
It's an executive session for litigation, if, if you find out Little Hill what?
Is it Little Hill?
So.
Oh, it's Camelot then.
I don't know what Camelot, Camelot's just something we came up with.
All right, I, uh, we have, there are two, there's, there's a, there's a, there's this motion on the floor, and it was seconded to, uh, close the, close the, uh, planning board meeting for an executive session, we won't be coming back to our meeting, and we're gonna move downstairs for the executive session.
Howard, would you, you're gonna be presenting what this issue, I'm sorry.
The, the discussion for that I wanna add is that I'm willing to vote yes if this is, is gonna be like a five minute executive session, and Howard, you're saying yes to that?
Yes.
Okay, so...
I was just gonna ask if...
Okay, so, all in favor?
No, no, it's, it's a roll call vote.
Roco, Tim.
Bob Watts, aye.
Harry.
Yes.
Rob, uh, Tilly.
Yes.
Rob Hoover, yes. Okay, meeting's adjourned, thank you, closing, executive session.